I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Chris, could you call the roll please?
Mrs. Detzel.
Here.
Mr. Yoshimura.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detzel.
Here.
Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, tonight we are going to appoint a new board member. Diane Bradley will fill the vacancy of the Board of Education commencing October 29, 2018, through December 31 of 2019. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Okay. Call for the vote.
Come on. I'm not getting it. I'm not getting it. Huh?
Sign back in again. Do you know what your password is?
Yeah.
It looks like I can't.
It's...I'm logged in though.
No, it's...
Diane, I'm voting for you, but we've got a little problem here. It's not...I'm not getting any votes.
Now he's on his own computer.
It's not good.
Should he put...try putting your password in again and hit log?
I can't.
It won't let you?
No.
Want to reopen it?
Choose two clicks and launch in a shuttle.
Start over? I don't know what else to do. Join meetings and let anything there happen?
Oh, oh, now try. There we go.
Let's see. Okay. There we go. Perfect.
Okay Diane, you're good.
Although it's not registering on my...oh, there we go.
There it is.
Okay. Mos...ugh, now if I could talk. Motion passes four to zero. Diane, would you like to come up for your oath of office?
Hi Diane Bradley. Do you hear my strength? Do you hear my strength? That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio. And I will perform faithfully. And I will perform faithfully. The duties of the Board of Education. The duties as a member of the Board of Education. Of the Northwest Local Schools. In Hamilton, Ohio. To the best of my ability. And according to the laws. Now in effect. Your actions be enacted. And during my continuance and set offense. And so my successor is elected and called.
Diane, I'm sorry.
He just was having drama. Okay, at this time we need a nomination for Vice President.
I'll nominate Mark Gilbert.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Okay. May I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Let me see what technology's gonna let us vote on that. Okay, it's not gonna let us close.
Well, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
Well, there we go.
Do you have it?
I would just exit. Go here.
There you go.
Click log in there. Yeah, exit. Put nine. Yes, server at home. And then, join meeting. Up right there. What's the date?
Agenda list.
Twenty-nine, yeah. There we go. Now are we in? Yeah. Try putting your password in again. What do we do with you, Joe?
Just click join meeting.
Oh, click join meeting. That's right. There, there. All on join. There we go. Okay. We're called for nominations. Okay, there we go. Okay, sorry about that. We should be good now. Motion passes five to zero. Go ahead and have the oath of Vice President.
Hi, Mark Gilbert. Do you hear my strength? Do you hear my strength? That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio. That I will perform faithfully the duties. That I will perform faithfully the duties. As Vice President of the Board of Education. As Vice President of the Board of Education. Northwest Local Schools District. Northwest Local Schools District. Hamilton County, Ohio. Hamilton County, Ohio. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. And according to the laws. And according to the laws. Now in effect. Now in effect. Your actions be enacted. Your actions be enacted. During my continuance and set offense. During my continuance and set offense. And so my successor is elected and called. And so my successor is elected and called.
Okay. Everyone has received a copy of the meeting minutes from our regular meeting on October 8th. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, motion passes five to zero. Now we have an approval of the special meeting on October 17th. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Do we have any additions or corrections for those? Motion pass five to zero. And we have one more special meeting on October 25th. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Motion pass five to zero. Okay, tonight we have special recognition. We have our middle school fall sports recognition.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dustin Garing and I'm very excited to announce that we get to celebrate our seventh grade GMC Champions tonight, the combined teams of White Oak and Corrine Middle School. And to present further, we're gonna have our two athletic directors come forward. We're gonna welcome Amanda Hardwick and Sean Ryan. Let's welcome them.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. My name's Amanda Hardwick. I'm the Athletic Director at Corrine Middle School.
I'm Sean Ryan. I'm the Athletic Director of Corrine.
And at this time, we want to recognize the seventh grade football team, but I'm gonna welcome up Coach Knott to talk about their season.
Thank you. First, before I get to the boys, I just wanted to express my appreciation to you guys for doing this. As soon as I mentioned it to them, parents and everybody, everybody got really excited. So they...it was a big deal to them. So I appreciate that. So for those of you who don't know, we did go eight no this year. GMC Champions. And before I continue talking, we're gonna go ahead...all the players that are here, if you would stand and come on up. You guys can line up right across the front here. God, they're big kids. So these young men right here did something that we haven't done in quite a few years. This was our first undefeated season in 10 years at Corrine Middle. At White Oak, they did have one five years ago. The guys that are seniors now on the team did go eight no that year. But this is a very exciting time for us. A lot of times when you have combinations of middle schools, you're not real sure how it's gonna go. And this was our second year combining. These guys handled it beautifully. From the very beginning, summer practices, you know, 100 degree weather, it's blazing hot, we're burning up. But they never lost focus. They never lost motivation. They always worked really, really, really hard. Those of you who don't know the other coaches, Tom Farmer, who...if you don't know Tom Farmer, you haven't been around. Because he's been here forever. And then also Joe Grippa was our other coach. But very rarely did we have to get on anybody's case real hard about working hard in practice because they honestly did it themselves. If they saw somebody starting to slack off, they would, you know, get on each other's case and say, "Come on, you're better than that. You're better than that." And really motivate each other, which at this age, you don't really run into very often. So I think what we're going to see is as these guys grow up, and as we talked about all year, setting a goal and then you have to take the steps to get to that goal. You have to do the right things to get there. As they continue to do that, as they move up to eighth grade, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth... For those of us who are all still around, I think we're gonna see some very special years, not only on the field, but off the field as well. So these are my guys and you guys did great. You deserve it.
He's a little...
All right, everybody smile. Have that workout. Gentlemen, do be fair. Shake hands all the way across and give that...
Nice job. Nice job.
I'm gonna give you the bump.
Nice job.
There you go.
Nice job.
There you go.
Nice job.
Congratulations, Jack Man. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Hey guys, hold on one sec. Hey guys, hold on one sec.
Great job. All right, guys, I didn't know.
Hey, hold on one sec. I want you to go ahead. Dustin, can we have a announcement? Since normally we would have wrote their name with the certificate.
How about we do something a little bit different?
Okay. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, so... Let's take a moment. Let's have all of our football players stand back up just for a second. I'd like to hear your name and your position. Your name, your middle school, and your position so we can celebrate you as well. From the field.
My name is William Lord. I play... I'm Lord's Guard and I love the White Oaks.
My name is Tyrell Lynn and I go to White Oak and I play a lot of football.
You're in the grade?
My name is Daisy. I go to Corrine. Slime. I'm a student. I'm a freshman. I'm a junior. I go to Corrine. I'm a freshman. I'm a freshman. I'm a junior. And I'm a sophomore. I'm a senior. I go to Corrine. I'm a freshman. I guard. When it's out of the day, I'm like, boy, I'm like, I'm not here to destroy. I'm a freshman. I guard. I'm a freshman. I'm a freshman. I'm a freshman.
See, I had to get your name so I have, you know, future fantasy football picks here, so... Good job, guys.
So at this time, we're gonna go outside and take a team picture, which is also your way to get out of here. So I'll meet my players, family, and coaches out by the flagpole and we'll take a nice group shot. Okay, come on out.
Oh, 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 oh. Hey, also, guys, real quick, I would like all the football players to give a big hand to mom, dad, whoever came with you, and getting you to and from practice and all their support. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Great job. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. It was great.
Great job.
He takes care of half of our population at the meeting. Now we're down the pitch.
She wrapped the gamble. That was beautiful. Congratulations.
Okay. We're gonna move on. We have our special presentation. We have an update from our diversity plan.
Yes, at this time, we'll have Dr. Crystal Enturney, who will give our update.
Good evening and thank you very much. First of all, I would like to share with you that it is always an honor to share our diversity plan and give you updates on everything that we have going on as it pertains to our diversity plan. It is always a huge milestone in this district and we are always grateful for the opportunity. So before I officially begin with the presentation, I would like to recognize a couple of people in the audience. First of all, Dr. Monique Johnson is joining us again. She is our consultant and she is always on the go, so she has to leave at the end of this. But last week, she was actually featured on Cincinnati.com for women in leadership as well as diversity initiatives and things that she has done in our community to support and promote diversity. And then also a diversity committee member, Mr. Chris Miller. And also, he is going to be our first speaker for our Multicultural Student Leadership Council and I will share some information about that as we go further. So I would like to just give an update on what we have been working on since last spring when the diversity plan was approved. It is now featured on the main page of our website so that you can feel free to access it at any time. So just to review a couple of things, I will share with you a staffing update, which includes our hiring for this school year as well as our recruitment and retention and also staff engagement and student engagement. Also, on a few of the slides, you'll see pictures. Many of them are from our diversity open house that we had in September. It was open for all of our staff members in the district to come and learn about diversity, strategies for addressing diverse students in the classroom, as well as educational opportunities for them to go on to pursue other academics as well as certifications through our district. So just a review of our pillars, and again, this is featured on our website. Leadership, curriculum, staffing, staff engagement, and student as well as community engagement. This picture is here is from when I attended the Ohio Diversity Council Roundtable and I met with other organizations as well as educational institutions who are just working to implement diversity initiatives within their organization, obviously to change with the times, keep up with the times, and to obviously better their organization. So these are, again, are our pillars and as we stated in the spring, this is a very long-term project and we plan to continue to stick with it as well as evolve with it as things and as time goes on. As you know, our district is very rapidly changing in demographics and so we must be on the cutting edge of everything that we do so that we can stay abreast of these changes and how we can best meet the needs of our students as well as our community members. So one of the pillars was staffing. And so a part of our staff recruitment this year was specifically focused on increasing the number of staff members of color in our district. So last winter, excuse me, Dr. Kestling did a presentation on our hiring and the lack of minority staff members we have in our district. And through that, she shared some very powerful research. And that is that all of our students benefit from minority teachers, not just our minority students. So with that, one of our greatest pushes and initiatives was to hire staff members of color in particular. And this is not to neglect other minority staff members, whether it's disability or religious backgrounds, but just to really focus on that in particular. So with that, here are our breakdown of certified staff members of color in the district. At Struble, we have one. Corrine Elementary, two. White Oak Middle School, two. Aos, two. Pleasant Run Middle School, one. CHS, two. Taylor Elementary, two. Pleasant Run Elementary, two. Northwest High School, two. And Northwest Passage, one. And this accounts for our certified staff members. So in most cases, these are our teachers and administrators. Couple of cases, this includes counselors as well as our director of health and wellness. Classified staff members of color. And these data points are both as of September 1st, 2018. So it accounts for our hiring season for this year. Spring, April or so to September 1st, 2019. Bus drivers in eighteen, excuse me. Bus drivers and assistants, 29. Health assistants, four. Technician, one. Custodians, maintenance, four. Parent mentor, one. Technology assistant, one. Cafeteria assistants, seven. And then classroom assistants, this includes our aides, monitors, as well as title one. And that's 39. So our total number of staff members of color in our district is currently at, or as of September 1st, 102 staff members. For the 2018 hiring season, spring to September 1st, 2018, we hired four certified staff members of color and 13 classified staff members of color. And just to put this into perspective for what has happened here in the past and the growth, for 2017, we hired and retained. So this is counting the number that were hired and the number that stayed after that year. For 2017, we hired zero certified staff members of color and seven classified staff members of color. So obviously, you can see the difference there. For 2016, looking at hiring and retention, we hired one certified staff member of color and they are still here in the district. 2015, hired and retained two certified staff members of color. And 2014, hired and retained two. So there are two still in the district from 2014. And then unfortunately, prior to that, we have not hired and retained a staff member of color since 2006. So with that, as you see, from 2006, there was a huge gap until 2014 of the staff members of color that we hired and retained. And obviously, we continue to grow from there. So we are very proud of this accomplishment. We know that we have more work to do and more opportunities out there to do more work, but we are very proud thus far of what we have done. So the next part is staff engagement. First of all, to engage our staff this year, we had a diversity open house in which we featured literature and information from various cultural as well as ethnic and religious groups. Also, we have a partnership with Ashland University in which our staff members are instructors for various courses. So we offered a cultural proficiency course this first session. We did not have the numbers to continue with that course. However, we are going to make some revisions because we continue to offer Ashland courses throughout the year. So there will be other opportunities for us to offer cultural proficient as well as implicit bias and cultural responsibility courses throughout the year. And another way is through our monthly newsletters. I am a part of Ohio Diversity Council as well as Teaching Tolerance and several other organizations and websites that I subscribe to. So they send me articles and information that I in turn share with staff, district staff, so that they know of various events, holidays, celebrations of cultural as well as ethnic and religious backgrounds, as well as articles and strategies to support them in the classroom. As for retention, we are continuing to brainstorm ideas. We feel as if we have a little time now until spring, which is when people start to resign and move about. So as a committee, we are working on strategies to retain our current minority staff members as well as evaluating the staff members that are leaving thus far through exit surveys to find out what we can do better to retain them. And that's really for all of our staff members, not just minority staff members. Just making sure that we are being culturally responsive to their needs as well as building a strong climate for our staff here. So the next piece is our student engagement piece. And we are doing this through the Multicultural Student Leadership Council. It is a new program that we developed through the Diversity Committee and we looked at various models throughout the country to see how students are engaged in diversity and how they can be supports to their school so that when we have racial issues in the school, that they can help, first of all, understand why some of those things happen and, second of all, intervene and be that positive voice for staff as well as students. We are very proud to say that in both of our high schools, we have diversity programs for students that they are part of and they do various community service activities as well as learning and growth opportunities for them. So with the Multicultural Student Leadership Council, it is a district-wide secondary organization developed to bring together multicultural students to promote learning, leadership, and positive experiences. So the process was for us to reach out to counselors as well as administrators, school administrators, for them to identify students who really meet these criteria, especially focused on leadership and having good school attendance as well as a passion and interest to help their community and to learn and to grow. These are not always our straight A students, our students who are in student government or on the football field or cheerleading squad or anything like that. These are students who have an interest, a passion, a need. They demonstrated leadership and they could benefit from being a part of this. So our counselors and administrators identified students. There was a brief application process and through that, we identified 23 students to start with who will be a part of the program. It's in the first year and so with that, we foresee more students coming. And as a diversity committee, we've even discussed and brainstormed future opportunities during this school year to increase those numbers, such as administrators recommending more students to be a part of it or students bringing a friend and recommending them to be a part of the program. It is a program that happens during the school day, about three to four sessions a year, and they will be transported to Houston Conference Center and they will have various speakers, presenters, will do games, door prizes. They get a nice lunch and then they go back to school for the afternoon. So it's approximately three hours, four times a year. And of course, the parents have to sign off and approve that they know their student's going to be out of school for that time. So a part of this are the presenters and I've already shared that Mr. Miller, who is from the National Underground Freedom Center, he will be our first speaker. And we are working to secure other speakers throughout the year. And we are working to secure other speakers throughout the year. Additionally, we will have an elementary initiative. The elementary principals found out that we were doing this with mostly our secondary students, and they got a little jealous, and they said, "Well, how can we help the elementary students?" So, they want to use this as a mentorship opportunity where the secondary students, after they've been trained and through the process a bit, will go and share with the elementary students and give them information and positive guidance to handle some of the challenges that they face as well. So, in conclusion, some of our next steps, again, as a Diversity Committee, we will work to develop retention strategies for our current 102 staff members of color in the district. We will also continue to evaluate the effectiveness and make modifications throughout. And in the hiring season in 2019, which will be here before we know it, typically February or March, we are working to go to more colleges and universities so that we can recruit minority staff members here to our district and to really work to improve the diversity affairs within our district for our students as well as our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Crystal. Joe, do we have a legislative update?
There's no legislative updates. They're all running for office.
Yes, they are.
Jim Butler Tech update?
Yeah, just one thing. Our next board meeting, which is November 5th, will be out at Butler Tech, the LaSorresville campus. If you want to come out about a half an hour early, they give you a tour of the place.
That's for an audience also.
Starting at 6:30.
Okay. At this time, do we have any reports from employee organizations? Certified or licensed? Classified? Any reports from school-related organizations? I have received two. Request for community comments. Susan Shipe wants to talk about college credit plus program.
Hi, good evening. I'm here with my husband, Randy, this evening. We have two senior students at Northwest High School and would like to express concern for the college credit plus program. Both of our students are enrolled in the Biology 2225 program through Sinclair Community College this semester. Students did not receive the required materials for the class until about October the 12th, which is almost completely through the first quarter. So, they did not have any of the required materials for that college class. And as you can imagine, that did create a little bit of stress getting assignments and work done. I did contact Leslie, is it Silvernagle, who's in charge of the college credit plus program? And she admitted to me that the materials were never ordered for this class because of the cost. So, that's one of the reasons I'm here is a big concern that you're going to offer college credit plus classes to students and not even provide the materials that are required for them to be successful in the class. I actually personally drove up to Sinclair College and went to the bookstore and bought the books so that my kids could complete the assignments and pass tests because they're taking the same tests that the students at Sinclair are required to take, and they did not have the materials to adequately prepare. I would like to know who decides in the district whether they're going to purchase materials for these classes or not, and what you're going to do moving forward if you're going to offer this type of class. What, do you have an answer?
Brenda Miller, who is in charge of Secondary and Curriculum.
Good evening. Leslie Silvernagle did bring this issue to my attention. The issue was not that the materials were not ordered because of cost. It was an oversight that is being corrected. I apologize to you. She shared with me the receipts that you submitted for your cost, and we will certainly take care of that. But that is an oversight, and again, I apologize for it. We are required to purchase the materials that are required for college credit plus courses. We don't get to choose which ones we want or don't want, and so that is something that we are obligated as a district to do.
She did share that with me. She told me that you tried to find an alternative vendor for the material that is at a lower cost, and she was unable to do that. That's why they were not ordered. I impressed upon her purchasing from Sinclair because it was a bundled package with notes from the professor at Sinclair, everything in the material together. So, I know she did go buy the materials for the class after we worked through it, and I did get my money refunded. But I want to throw that out there that you really should be purchasing what the student at Sinclair would get, not from a secondary source.
How much was the cost?
$121.33, and there's only three or four students in the class.
Yes, we're required to purchase the required materials for the course. We can choose where we get them from, so we try to be fiscally responsible to get the best price. But we are required to purchase those materials if they're listed as a required resource. And so, that is our obligation to do that.
In terms of...
I know they're signed up for classes next semester, so that's...
Right. But again, unacceptable. We need to do a better job with this. They need the materials when the class starts. So, with us switching to Sinclair, I don't know if that tied into it some. I'm sure it did. But second semester, there will be no late materials whatsoever.
I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and I apologize that you had to drive up there and get them. Is Carrie Davis still here?
I believe she is.
She's left.
And we will move on here. Okay, classified and licensed personnel. Slide.
All right, the first item is the certified licensed personnel item, and it's certified retirements and resignations. Superintendent recommends Board of Education approve the certified retirements and resignations as listed.
Is that moved?
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is classified personnel retirements and resignations. Superintendent recommends Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
Is that moved? Second.
Moved in second. Any questions on the classified retirements and resignations? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is a fiscal item. Approve, accept, and appropriate local mini-grants. Appropriate local mini-grants. Superintendent Treasurer recommends Board of Education to approve and accept and appropriate federal and state grants as listed.
Is that moved? Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions on the mini-grants? Okay. Motion passed five to zero.
Amy's getting the presentation ready this for your treasurer.
And while she's getting ready, I wanted to let everyone know, thank you Diane, was able to come in and get a quick tutorial on how to do all the voting and everything. So, she was able to, kind of quickly, but to go over our agenda for this evening.
Good evening. It is October, and that's the month where there are five-year forecasts. And normally, we do a presentation, we go through all the lines on a forecast. But tonight, I thought we'd do something more broader, get to what's beneath these numbers and where these numbers come from. So, first, I'd like to start with the number on the screen and have you think about this number. This is the number that we had in front of us when we were building our new elementary schools. This is the number we have in front of us as we're going through our strategic planning. And this is the number I want you to think about tonight as we go through the presentation. Again, it's the five-year forecast. The board is required twice a year to submit this to the Ohio Department of Education, once in October and once in May. The top part of the forecast is our revenues. So, with the revenues, two-thirds of our pie chart is made up of local property taxes, whether it's from residents and commercial properties or through state tax credits. And the other third comes from the state through unrestricted and restricted funding. But I wanted to show you that our pie chart is pretty much the same every year. We bring it up every year, but just to show you that four years ago, the pie chart allocation was almost the same as it is projected four years from now. The pie and where the dollars come from or where our revenue come from doesn't really change very much from year to year. Dollar amount may change, but as far as where our resources come from, it's pretty much the same. However, there are revenue drivers that do change the picture of the chart over time. These include enrollment. The state funds us on a per pupil basis, so as enrollment fluctuates up or down, our revenue changes from the state up or down. It also determines on how we change compared to the state average. If the state average increases and we decrease, we get richer, we receive less, and vice versa. New construction. So, property taxes are flat when they're voted. However, we do get a bump the year new construction hits the tax bill. So, when a property is built, if it's taxable on January 1st of that year, we do get an increase for that property's valuation. After that, it rolls back into the total valuation, and it's the same amount of money we've always received. And legislative action. The state's required to pass a budget every two years, and that budget impacts our state funding. It could increase our funding, and it can decrease our funding, and it has done both. On the expenditure side or on the bottom of the forecast, 76% of our forecast for our expenditures are personnel, salaries and benefits. We're a service industry. We're providing education to students. Most of our expenditures are in people. 20% is in purchased services. This is in our special needs, costs, and utilities, and students attending elsewhere. And about 3% of our cost is in supplies, not only in instructional supplies, but also custodial supplies, fuel, tires, toilet paper, I mean, you name it. 3% of our overall budget is in supplies. And the other 1% is pretty much, most of that 1% comes from the county, Otter and Treasurer in their billing for tax bills and the collection to submit the revenue to us. But again, the picture, the overall picture of how we have our expenditures is the same every year. Four years ago, projected four years from now, the majority of our costs are in salaries and benefits, it's in people. We spend about 3% in supplies, and we have about 20% in operations and purchased services. However, the things that do change our expenses are expense drivers such as inflation. The cost for the same fuel, the same supplies, salaries and benefits all go up each year. Costs for students who are moving in or maybe identified, depending on where their placement needs to be and what their needs are, could go up. Students attending elsewhere, children in poverty, social, emotional needs, all these things are uncontrollable for the district, we're required to spend it, and those do increase costs and drive costs up. We've been looking at this picture for several years, and what I wanted to draw to your attention is from 2013 through 15, we had two emergency levies, which is why the blue line or the revenue is higher. In 2015, the board partnered with the community to move $10 million out of cash, balance, reserves, and the general fund to help with our master facility project. In 2018, we started having an operating... Well, let me back up. The red line that bumps up is when we move the $10 million. So, that arbitrarily inflates the expenditure when we move the $10 million. In 2018, we started having the deficit expenditure, where you can see the red line starts to move above the blue line. And in 2020, towards the bottom, our green line, which is our cash balance dips below our cash balance policy. This cash balance policy is 60 days or about 25% of our overall budget. And we have this policy so that we can pay for items at the end of the year in obligations, accrued wages, things at the end of the year that we haven't paid for yet as a buffer for economic downturns. State makes a cut in funding, we still have the expenses, so we have to have something to fall back on and to implement instructional initiatives or other local changes that we want to do. So, you say, "Well, when did we know? When did we know we were going to the operation deficit? When did we know before we moved our $10 million?" This is a question I get frequently asked. And that $10 million is a one-time pot of money. It wasn't a continuing revenue source, and it also was a partnership with the community for funds that they had already paid through a previous emergency levy. But we knew back in 2012, which was after both emergency levies were passed, we told the community and the state that in 2018, we were going to start seeing a structural operating deficit, meaning our expenditures were starting to creep more than our revenue, and it would increase more in 19, 20, and 21. Then in 2013, we reported that the passage of the two emergency levies would not solve the long-term financial challenges of the district. So, even with both emergency levies, which now we only have the one, we moved the other into the master facility project. But even with the passage of both emergency levies and collecting both emergency levies for general fund operations, we knew we'd be seeing an operational deficit in 2018. In 2015, on the left, we showed the community and the state that with the emergency renewal, with the renewal of our emergency levy in 2017, we would be able to help offset our operating deficit, but the operating deficit would not go away. We would still have an operating deficit. Remember, these funds were funds we've been operating on since 2007. So, it was a renewal of a levy of expenditures that we have been operating with since 2007. And on the right is our current forecast. So, while we were projecting, as you saw before, $10 million in 2012, and $10 million without a levy, without the renewal, but back to $5 million in 2015, and then in 2019, we're about a $5 million operational, operating deficit. We've been showing this for the past several years. And with fiscal sound management, we have been able to reduce a $6 million emergency levy that we no longer collect and $5 million of operating deficit. So, we've done both of those things, yet we're still showing a $5 million deficit continuing going forward. So, you may ask, is our deficit a result of revenues or expenditures? Let me walk you through some slides, and I'll let you make the decision for yourself. Since 2004, the state has made some changes to our funding. We used to get funded for tangible personal property. We have lost $4 million per year by the state just taking that away. The state used to give us an additional 7.5% cost adjoin business factor, which gave us an additional percentage of revenue because we operated in Hamilton County, which had higher cost of living, higher costs to operate, so we got additional funding. Then they just rewrote their budget, like I said, every two years it changes, and took that away. That's an additional $2 million per year that we no longer receive. Transportation. So, a year ago, the state redid the budget, and they decided to no longer fund transportation reimbursement at 60%. Instead, they reduced it down to our state share, which is 40%, which cost us, or we no longer received, a million dollars a year. We still have the expenditures, but we no longer have that million-dollar revenue coming to the district to help offset that cost. Last year, we lost $820,000. And when I say we lost it, per the funding formula, the state owed it to us, but they didn't pay it. They do what's called a cap. They determine your revenue can grow so much at this point, their budget is 3% in the budget, and if your revenue allocation based on the formula is more than that, they just don't pay it. So, we were due $820,000 more last year than we received. Catastrophic costs is we have high-need students. We can submit to the state for reimbursement of 50% of the cost over $23,000. The state is required by the law to give us 50... The state is required by the law to give us fifty percent of that overage. However, they cap it, or they give it an appropriation amount that it cannot exceed. So we received fifteen percent of the fifty percent we were supposed to receive last year, which is over five hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Community schools. So since 2004, we've had more students leaving our district, which is taking an additional one point eight million dollars with them, monies we used to keep here at the district. And also scholarships. Scholarships have become new and have grown, and that's an additional one point seven million dollars again that we used to collect and keep here at the district that now is going with the students elsewhere. So what have we done since 2004 to try to recoup this lost revenue? With the master facility project, we converted an emergency levy into a bond slash operating. So we have one mil or one point four million dollars per year that will come in from that operating levy. And we have our emergency levy that we've been renewing since 2007 for seven point three million dollars. However, this is an annual loss of four million dollars every year, and I say we have an operational deficit of five million. State funding. So a third of our revenue is coming from the state. In 2004, they funded per pupil at a little over five thousand dollars, and our forty percent that we received from the state was a little over two thousand. By 2008, it was about five point five, where we got about two point two thousand dollars per student, but it was a ten percent increase in state funding in that timeframe. By 2014, they increased it by three percent. By 2017, they increased it four percent. However, by the current year, 2019, they've only increased it by point three percent. And as I said, last year, we were capped by eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This year, we're projected to be capped about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is just revenue in the formula that the district is owed, that the state is not going to pay us, based on the formula calculation. Through the forecast, using the current formula, projected to be capped in four of the five years, and then going on to the formula, there's another biennial budget next year, so we'll have to wait to see how that changes state funding, but right now, using the current formula, this is what we're projecting. So as I started with, two-thirds of our revenue is from local property taxes. And property taxes are lost when they're voted, so it's kind of like getting a raise when a levy is on the ballot. So in 1976, the state required every school district to pass twenty mils. It was called the twenty mil floor. So in eighty-six, our community passed a levy, which gave us a raise. In eighty-nine, in ninety-seven, the 2012 is from 2007 renewal, and 2015 is the one mil levy that was attached to our master facility bond. Seventy-seven percent of our revenue comes from residential property taxes. The sixteen to twenty percent comes from our commercial. It grew between twelve years ago and the current year because of that tangible personal property, where I said we lost four million dollars in revenue. So the pie chart changed, but we still lost total revenue. The total revenue of the pie shrank. Property taxes are fixed when passed. So remember, I said in 1976, we were required to pass twenty mils. So the voted milage column is what was passed by our community. The collected milage column is what we collect currently this year for the dollar amount that stays the same as the years when the levy was passed. So in eighty-six, eighty-nine, ninety-seven, 2015, that's when we had additional revenue. But we've been using the same dollar amounts to operate the district since 1976, eighty-six, eighty-nine, ninety-seven, 2015. So thank you for your own home if you only got raises every seven to ten years. So in summary, our revenue is flat from the state, and it's fixed when a levy is passed. On the expenditure side, through the forecast, we're looking at projected expenditures of twelve and a half percent. Personnel is increasing. This was a plan that we had to retain, reward, and recruit personnel. Benefits are increasing. We have had some rough years on the health insurance piece, but national average is an increasing health insurance eight to ten percent a year. So even with wellness initiatives, just that national average and the norms of health insurance going up is increasing our costs. So our expenditures are increasing approximately three percent per year due to inflation and other cost factors, things we want to do to fund our instructional priorities. So as expenses increase and revenues continue to be flatlined, we'll have to continue to reallocate our current resources in order to fund those instructional priority and shift dollars around to maybe not be able to fund all the things we currently have. As I've showed you, our revenues are flat, and we need to find ways to increase them. Our expenditures are increasing, and we need to continue to find ways to reduce them. And our student achievement is continuing to increase, and we're going to continue to keep increasing it. However, we need to be able to be sustainable. The continued support of our community is crucial if the district is to maintain a positive financial future. The Ohio law requires that the district operate within a balanced budget. So this was the number I showed you at the beginning. I told you that this was the number we had in front of us when we planned our new elementaries, and that this is the number we have in front of us as we develop our strategic plan. And most of you have probably figured it out what this number is, but this is the year that our current kindergarten class graduates. As I've showed you tonight, on the left is a classroom from 1980s. Our funding is from the seventies and eighties, but we're educating kids today on funding from the past. And we have to think about the classrooms of the future, and will we have the funds to meet their needs, we'll be able to educate them so that they can meet the workforce of tomorrow. Any questions?
Amy, can you share when the state decides to reduce something or take something away from us? How much time do they get, warning do they give us?
Sometimes it could be in the biennial budget. So usually, they start that process in February. They finalize it in June. Our year starts in July. Sometimes they may finalize it by the end of June, and we start in July, and sometimes we don't find out until October or December what really meant in that budget. Other times, they've made cuts in March for the same year, and our year ends in June. But our classes are over in May, and they make cuts in March. So it's all over the place. We just really have to be prepared and ready.
Any questions?
On a real high level, can you explain the formula, the funding formula from the state, and what goes into that? I mean, high level, you can't...
Real high level, since it's about that thing. Per pupil. Everything's based on a per pupil cost. And then they also look at your local district property evaluations, and they determine whether you are a wealthy district, which they consider us a wealthy suburban district, or a poor, rural, urban district, and that's how they determine your state share. So our state share right now is forty percent. So they determine the calculation of the formula based on per pupil, the number of pupils, all the needs or weights that our students qualify for, and then they only give us forty percent of it.
I know that internally, we eat, sleep, and drink this. It's on the forefront of everything we do. What our plan is, is to put out the reductions, because it's like Amy said, we have not been fiscally irresponsible. We have continued to make reductions over the past three years, and reducing contracts, reducing employees, and it's a very difficult process. But if you look at what she put up there, our money is from 1996, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, the eighties. One time, the district taxpayers' taxes have raised because of the school district, and that was 2007. I mean, to be fiscally responsible that many years, eleven years later, it's no longer to put up a levy, and it won't raise your taxes. We need to put up a levy so we can keep what we have in place, because there's a lot of mindsets out there that say we're overstaffed. Well, we'll show you our exact numbers. We have nothing to hide. Anything can be requested by public record. Be glad to show it to you. Administration certified, classified. We've us well above and beyond what we're required to. We're going above and beyond what we need to do, and it's time for the community to see what we are doing. So we're going to spend second semester, but there has to be a levy next fall, so we'll be coming to you with those recommendations, and we'll be going out to the community to talk to them, gather their input and feedback on what they think's important, where cuts should come from, and then we'll present it to the five of you, and you guys can make your decisions on where the cuts need to come from, and we'll go from there. There's nothing easy about this. It's terrible. But we have been very fiscally responsible. The one thing, I don't know if you're going to vote in November, but I hope you do, because when our governor took office, there was ten thousand dollars in the rainy day fund. There's now two point two billion dollars. So all those cuts she showed on that left side, I think you can see where they're going. It's going to rain one of these days, and we'll be ready. But for now, it's not helping us a whole lot. So we can only hope for whoever is the next governor. Joe doesn't, he's not lying when he says there's no legislation. We can't get anybody up there to talk to us. They're all out on the campaign trail. They're not speaking. They're not pushing for anything. When you ask, can you give us a heads up? Nope, we're not talking about anything, because until we know who the governor is, funding could change, academics could change, testing could change. So even with the election, we're probably still February, March, April before we find out anything, so we can't afford to wait. So we will do the roadshow. We will make sure that we are collaborative. We will make sure that all our stakeholders get input. We will do a good job of communicating and getting all the facts out there and making sure that we listen to our employees, listen to our community members, and listen to our parents and our students so we can do what's best for all.
Juan, I think it's important too, and I know we keep saying it, but to remind our community, a bond levy and an operating levy are two completely different things. And when we went for the bond levy, we were very open and honest. This is to build new schools. We cannot use that pot of money to operate the schools. So down the road, we are going to need operating money. And, you know, my biggest fear is, and I've heard it with other districts, once you build schools and then you go for an operating levy, oh my gosh, they built these schools and now they don't have any money. Well, it's not the same pot of money. And we were upfront when we went out for the bond levy that we would need an operating levy. So we definitely have our work cut out for us, but like Todd said, I mean, anybody can request anything to look at our number of administrators, look at the type of classes that we offer for the kids and the opportunities, and see that, you know, we're not wasting money. So, who else? Okay, now that we're all upbeat, let's go to...
All right, the next item is a general business item. Yes, you do, to accept it.
If we don't accept it, we'll change.
Deny it. Does Pam go back, Chris, or...
Yes.
I messed this up. I'm staring at it, but I know it doesn't switch back when I do that, when I jump ahead.
Guys just want to do a verbal then?
Okay. Oh, have a motion to accept this?
So moved, second.
Been moved in second. Any questions?
Mrs. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Mr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Yoshinori?
Aye.
Aye.
Good to go?
Yep.
All right. Next item is a general business item. Resolution acknowledging the commission's design phase review comments for the Pleasant Run Middle School renovation. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution as listed. Again, this is the design phase. This is going through OSFC, making sure we're following the formats for putting in the air conditioning for that building and all the electrical upgrades it needed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is a resolution to declare students in practical transport. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution to declare students in practical transport as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding this?
I don't know.
Do you want to explain it?
So we have to make decisions on when it's practical to put these students into our bus routing. Sometimes they're out, so they are compensated with a fee for transportation instead of being transported.
Motion passed five to zero.
The next issue is resolution to accept bus stops. Be it resolved that the Northwest Local School District approve all bus stops assigned and maintained in the transportation office. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the bus stops as listed. We're required by the state to do this.
So moved, second.
Moved in second. Any questions regarding the resolution to accept the bus stops?
Were these from just the issues that we had and the complaints, or...
Everything, basically, but all adjustments also.
And this is everything?
And we're pretty, just for the board and the public to know, we're pretty sure we have fixed everything that's been brought to our attention and currently are working on anything that is called in.
Great, thank you.
Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is vendor contracts. Superintendent and Treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding vendor contracts? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is the master facility project. GMP adjustments. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the attached change order as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions on the adjustments? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is certificate licensed personnel items. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve certificate licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding certificate licensed personnel? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is classified personnel items. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding classified personnel items? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is from curriculum and instruction. Out of state and extended field trip request. It is for Northwest High School and Corrane High School DECA students. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the out-of-state and extended field trip requests as listed.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. And questions or comments? I'd just like to wish all of them good luck. It looks like they're going for their central regional leadership conference. Motion passed five to zero.
The next item is an extended field trip request. It is for Pleasant Run Elementary permission to overnight field trips to the Cincinnati Zoo and Botanical Gardens. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the field trip request as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Just want to say I love the fact that the kids get this opportunity, because lots of times we take it for granted, not all kids get to go to the zoo in different places like this. like this. Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is an extended and out of state field trip. The Corrine High School Athletic Department for the boys' basketball team to Detroit, Michigan. No school will be missed. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the extended and out of state field trip as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions? Just like with the teachers and with the coaches, I want to also thank them. They take on a big responsibility anytime they're going to go, whether it's to the zoo or out of state in this case, and we thank them for going above and beyond and doing this to give the kids the opportunity. Motion passed five to zero.
The next item is from the curriculum instruction department also. It is new courses proposed for 2019-20 school year. At this time, I'll turn it over to Brenda Miller for a short explanation.
Good evening. So, what you have before you is a proposal for 16 new courses to be added to our program of study for next school year for our two high schools. Last spring, Mr. Bowling and Mr. Yader challenged our high school principals to start thinking about a redesign, thinking about how to make our students' future ready, and that's all students, and figuring out pathways for all students to whatever their future holds, whether that's career, college, et cetera. So, these courses tonight, I'm just presenting to you for information. They were developed by our high school teachers and administrators, and there are more to come. I'm excited for these opportunities. I believe that they offer greater flexibility for our students. We've moved several year-long courses to semester courses. These are not in any way meant to add staff. They are meant to replace current courses that we have or expand offerings for our students. So, we have, for example, with English III, which is traditionally offered to our juniors, we now have the option for juniors and seniors to take one of six literature courses, African-American literature, short stories and drama and poetry, things that we believe will be more relevant to our students and engaging. And so, because they're semester courses, it will also increase flexibility in terms of scheduling. We also have some art courses. Art II was a year-long course, is a year-long course currently, which our state requires one fine arts credit. So, our Art I class, Art Foundations, is how it's been rewritten for you to look at, is a semester. Art II has now been broken into two semester courses, drawing and painting. So, I think these are really good moves for our students. I'm excited for things to come. At the next board meeting, I believe I'll be bringing you two AP courses that we would like to open up to freshmen. We, they're both in the Social Studies Department. We also will probably be bringing a middle school service learning course. Our principals and teachers are interested in having opportunities for our middle school students to be able to do community service in our elementary schools and have it be scheduled into their day. We also have that in the proposal for today for high school. So, I'm very excited about that. We are looking and planning to offer AP camps next summer for students moving from eighth grade to ninth grade and ninth grade to 10th grade. It will be funded out of a federal grant, so not hitting our general fund, but an opportunity to help prepare students for the type of thinking and writing and reasoning required in that type of course. So, we're very excited to be able to offer things at all levels of the course spectrum and hope that you'll consider the 16 courses presented today for action at next meeting. Do you have any questions before we go on?
Will the courses be offered at both high schools?
So, the plan is to offer them at both high schools when we do our course requests. Depending on the availability of staff, we may not be able to offer all of the same courses at both high schools. We currently are not able to do that because we have different certifications with staff, different sizes of staff, but the plan is to try to encourage students to sign up for these classes at both high schools.
We have talked, this will become an issue in lieu of the five-year forecast and other things, to sit with a class of four, five, or six is not very doable. But we can look at different locations like Houston, and we talked about the possibility of using that for classes, busing the kids there if the kids don't want to go back and forth to each school because nobody from one school or another should get shut out because that school just doesn't happen to have certified teachers. So, we want that to remain a possibility. The other thing to think about is the requirement of graduation is 20 credits. A good kid's going to get six and a half their first year, six and a half their second, maybe even seven. So, you're going to be at 19 credits at the end of the junior year if you would like to, especially in lieu of online courses. So, the semester courses, I like because you have to have four English credits and math. You can double up on them. Kids have the possibility of graduating early. What we love about the CCP and AP is kids can leave and have their freshman year of college done when they go there. And that's a big benefit because they can start a master's program if they need to and not have to pay for that extra year. So, we will look at all viable options so all kids at both schools have options at one campus or another or a central location.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that both schools are receiving the same opportunities and that you're not getting any advantage by being closer to one versus the other when it comes to the courses.
Is anybody going to track the progress of these new courses and give us some kind of evaluation on? Because, you know, you could say these courses are great, but they're not working, they're not working. That's my biggest concern here.
I would think we check all our courses.
No, it's challenging in courses where we do not have a high stakes or a nationally recognized exam or state exam to look at in terms of data, but we certainly look at course grades. We certainly track interest and participation. I just presented a list of courses that we have dropping enrollment for to our department chairs to consider whether or not we can afford to continue those courses. So, we do, we're trying to look. These are all courses that are not tied to an end of course exam in our state, but they're things that we are definitely looking at. Do they have a positive impact on ACT scores at the junior and senior level with these literature and composition courses, for example?
More importantly, do they meet graduation requirements because they can pass these courses? Because right now, only 65% of Ohio will graduate if they keep the state standards where they are for graduating seniors, and it has not been changed. They still need a certain amount of points, so if they don't go back and extend it like they did last year, there's going to be a lot of kids in trouble.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, for my update, I want to let everybody know that Dan Bolden has decided he can, he has decided he has met qualifications to retire and will be retiring from the transportation supervisor. And in lieu of all the issues we've had around transportation, I want you to know that we were going to post that position immediately, put a committee together to look at possible candidates and look to move forward as quickly as possible. Our goal is to have one, someone up and running by January, beginning of the year. That way, they can work and have everything in place, look at reverse training system and how it works, and make sure we have appropriate employees to make sure we start the year better than we did this year. Secondly, the following committees have met and still asking for more volunteers. The Superintendent Advisory Committee has met, the Very Important People VIP Committee, and where these folks came from is folks who have worked on past levies. That does not, that does not delete anyone else from being on these committees. Our purpose is to cover our big topics. The first one we covered at SAC and VIP was school finances and how schools are funded, basically the same report or part of the report that you've seen here from Amy. Amy actually has the factual numbers now. We will cover curriculum and instruction on the next one, and then school safety and mental health disorders and try to make sure the district is aware of what's going on. We are continuously meeting with this union of teachers or classified employees to make sure we are communicating with them, gathering their input and feedback to make sure when we have to make decisions, they are aware of what's going on. I've been attending PTA meetings and will continue that participation as we go into and trying to do that on a quarterly basis. It's basically whatever the parents want to bring to the table or the agenda. We're trying to offer more coffees out in the community or more meetings that are more local if people want them because we want to, one, provide more information to our stakeholders and, two, gather more information. So, those committees are going very well. Still looking for participants. Some of you have spouses. Some of you yourselves are on our strategic planning committee. We have met with a couple groups. Today, I met with the secretaries and heard some of their input. I've already talked to supervisors in transportation, Tracy and Brenda and them. We're going to go out after our next strategic planning committee and present to the bus drivers because it's too difficult to drive your morning route, only have a couple hours in between, hit your next route. So, we want to make sure they're informed, they get their feedback, and we're going to do the same thing with the secretaries, maintenance, and custodial staff. So, if anybody would like to join those, just send me an email. You're more than welcome to. And then lastly, my reminder was the November 5th meeting is at Pellet Tech, and we'll provide tours, just like Jim said. And Darryl can talk about our beauty. I did not attend because of my shoulder, but I think Pam's good.
Go ahead, Pam.
So, we'll wait till you guys get your updates. That's all I have.
Okay, at this time, we go to community comments. Does anybody in the audience have any questions regarding anything that was discussed tonight? Yes.
So, my question is for Mrs. Wells on the five-year forecast. You mentioned that the rates are fixed on the property taxes. Is that, is that for both residential and commercial, or is there a difference between the two? Because I thought I saw something on the graphic, something about...
They both have a reduction factor. Residential is a minimum of a 20 mil floor.
Okay.
But yes, they're fixed when...
On both residential and commercial?
When voted, yes. You can get more of the full voted mileage on commercial property, but it does roll back to keep the dollar amount fairly the same.
So, the original dollar amount goes back to that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Fix map. Anybody else?
Yes.
I actually have two questions. One, about the forecast. Has the district identified other school districts that are having, confronting the same issue that we're confronting with the operational deficit? And if so, is it a possibility of networking with those districts to see what we can do to leverage about a change with the state?
Amy is on a committee and can address some of them.
There is a committee of superintendents and treasurers working with state legislators to do a proposal on a new biennial budget, hopefully for the new governor. The state legislature has, the Supreme Court has ruled school funding unconstitutional since the 1990s, and the state legislature hasn't done anything to fix it. So, it's not that no one's trying. We've tried over and over. It just doesn't get resolved, and most districts in the state, if you look at their five-year forecasts, are in operational deficits.
So, we're not the only district?
No, we're not. Everybody is struggling and trying because taxes are fixed when passed and state funding is not increasing.
But I think, to what you're suggesting, we have our health insurance because, I mean, everybody's facing skyrocketing health insurance costs, and I don't know how many years it's been now, but we formed a consortium with other school districts to do our health insurance to try to fight costs a little bit. So, that's one way we've worked with other districts.
We have purchasing pools for purchasing supplies also to reduce costs. We're in various consortiums.
Is there anything concerned taxpayers in this district can do? What action can we do to try to help assist the school district in confronting the issue?
Me personally, I think, and I've sat through that five-year forecast, I think that's probably the third time now, it's so confusing that the more we can try to understand it, to get out there, that when we're talking to the neighbor, we run into somebody at the grocery, that we can try to explain it because how does anybody realize that we're not getting any more money than we did whatever, you know, back in 76?
I wrote it down, 1976.
Right, right.
Right.
And it's just, it's so confusing. So, then it's hard to explain to people that, you know, we're not just blowing money and just need more and more and more. To me, I loved her graphics on this, the way you're sitting there and you're, she's bringing up each thing that we're just losing millions here and millions there. So, I think it's the more we can educate ourselves to educate others.
I think there is a way through BASSA, we are constantly talking that superintendents can put recommendations to the state and they just go in here and out there, but they do listen to parents. So, my SAC is trying to combine with Amy's committee, and maybe we can address some letters that can go to some of the legislators who are on your committee and try to do it that way so at least they see it's coming from parents. So, that part would be helpful, and now that we've got these committees formed, we could put some letters together and get those to state legislators and make sure they get your, from you. Because our problem is everybody else's problem. If you look around us, unless you're a difference in suburban, urban, or rural, that's when the funding changes. But for those districts who are like us, they're having similar problems, and so, like she said, there's several superintendents and treasurers on the committee, but the legislators are the key people. And if we can put together parts of her presentation with a letter and get those mailed to them, emailed to them, that would be very beneficial. So, we could work on that part.
And also, I believe, encouraging our community leadership trustees to take a look and partner with the school district on a much deeper and collaborative level.
At least these TIFs continue to be a very big deal for our district. So, we had one that we've discussed very much with Rumpke, but we're also working on another one to do the energy. So, I've tried to bring it up at my committee meetings, so we'll try to continue to keep the committees updated on what's going on there to see what assistance we can get.
And my last and final question, I know we're getting late. Congratulations on the appointment, and I want to also express appreciation for the school board truly embracing diversity with the various initiatives that the district has going on. I guess I just had a question as far as, could you explain as far as the appointment, the process, and what you took into consideration as far as making appointment with the vacancy?
Yes, and we actually went over this the night that we, we got the, I read the letter, Bob's resignation. Typically, it's pretty wide open as far as direction on what a board can do. There are actually boards that can just pick somebody and just say, "We want whoever," and that's that. There are, I mean, you can interview, you don't have to interview, you can go with, I mean, some people go with whoever had the most votes in line. So, it's pretty much wide open. What we decided to do is interview process. We asked for just basic name, address, phone number, why you, what is your interest in the school board, and what you feel like your qualifications are. I believe we got eight, eight? And we met as a board of the four of us and went over each one of them and narrowed it down to four. We interviewed four, and I guess last week, yeah, we interviewed four, and then after, you know, we all discussed and discussed and discussed and came up with who we thought was a great candidate for us.
We had two wonderful finalists to the choice, and it was, it was pretty difficult. I will tell you that right now. But for the benefit of the board and for our camaraderie and cooperation, collaborative thing, we had to move ahead, and so Diane was our unanimous pick.
I actually think we were in a good position that all four that we interviewed were, you know, very involved, people that attend the board meetings and kind of know, already know the things that are going on. So, it was a difficult but a good problem to have.
Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Yes.
I actually have a question for Ms. Turney on the diversity plan. What is the goal, or you guys, the goal for the district for employing people of color, both at the certificated level and the classified level? Is there a goal to reach?
We, thank you. Great question. We are just working to continually improve as well as sustain. So, we don't have a magic number, but we're working to, again, improve, sustain, and make sure that we are involved, evolving with our changing demographics as well. So, just keeping that in mind as we are looking at those numbers as a whole.
And one of the things, just to chime in, when we look at our student population, the diversity of our staff doesn't represent the student population. So, that was kind of one of the things we looked at as a benchmark to see how close we are. So, it's not that we're going to, that we have a goal that when we reach that, we're going to say we're there, but that was something that we looked at that was a realization for us that we need to do a better job of trying to make sure that our district staff represented the population of the students that we were serving.
Are you looking somewhere specifically or recruiting staff in specific places to?
Everywhere we can. We had, the last board meeting, Darryl and Chris Lynn passed the addition to the, I believe, the classified handbook where they're looking at recruiting our own classified employees to get involved in college plans, to get them certified in teaching, and that they can be reimbursed. they can be reimbursed for partial pay for their college courses through the district. So it has to unfortunately start at a lower level. There's not enough out there through past presentations. There's only so many graduates at universities, but it just takes time, and we feel like, and Chris Lynn has led this charge in stepping in, and Darryl, that if we can build from the ground up, we can get there a lot easier than going out and hoping we can convince them just to come our way.
We're also pursuing CCP offerings in education from different universities for our students to try to recruit from our student body and have them moving into the ranks either as classified or certified staffs. We're trying to approach that angle as well.
So I think you see that it's a unified cohesive push around the diversity plan to embed it in our strategic plan and make it part of everything we're doing from a curriculum standpoint, a staffing standpoint, and an engagement standpoint to make sure that we're serving the community that we represent.
Thank you. Anybody else? Great questions. Okay, this time we'll go to board member comments. Joe?
I just want to make a comment about Bob Engel. I've known Bob for about 15 years now, and mostly through umpiring as a crew in some of the major softball tournaments in southwestern Ohio. While, I met him while officiating varsity basketball, not only at Northwest but also at Colrain. And he tried like heck to give me some pointers on improving my game, which fell on deaf ears, let me tell you that right now. I do remember one time he was at the game and a bat flew in the gymnasium at Colrain. I don't know if you guys remember that. It was interesting. Anyways, Bob suggested I might run for the Board of Education Northwest School District. I thought all those marathons he ran in had diminished his mental state. As a new board member, I saw his insight and candor on being a collaborative board member. I sincerely thank him for that. With much angst on his resignation, I will continue to seek his counsel in working for changes in the district. I will miss his dry sense of humor and his brutal honesty. I will hope that Ms. Bradley, who replaces Bob, will continue his work. I thank you, Bob Engel.
Thanks, Joe.
I cannot tell you how honored I am to be in this position right here, and I'm very thankful to the board for choosing me of the candidates that were, that I was working with, that I was included with. And, you know, their decision came ultimately from you guys because you voted the board this year in. I wasn't elected, I was appointed, and I say that because I'm not here with some alternate agenda. I'm here because I am a parent and I have two children in the school district, and I have lived in this school district for the past 17 years. So I'm here with my children as well as the rest of the children's interests at heart and that good. And one other thing I want to share with you, I'm very approachable, I'm a very laid person, I have a suit on for these meetings and that's about it, other than that. And because of that, I want to share with you something very personal with me, that I am a person who is not of any faith. I don't have a religious direction that I affiliate with in any way, shape, or form. And because of that, I do not participate in any type of religious connection. So that includes the Pledge of Allegiance that has some religious affiliation with it. So as of where we will decide what I will take, do when that Pledge of Allegiance comes up, when I'll sit orally, the room, we'll collectively discuss that. But I just want to let everyone know that that's the reason why I'm not participating in the pledge. So thank you very much for this honor to be, to sit up here with you guys.
Thank you.
I just want to welcome Diane.
Thank you.
Saturday, I attended the Colrain Band Invitational. I just want to say, great job. They raised revenue to help support the band, which is, the amount of work that goes into that is unbelievable. It is just perpetual motion, pretty much from, I think last year when I went, I saw them at about 5:30 in the morning, starting to pick up after a football game from Friday night. So you can imagine what had to be cleaned up, and these banquets and parents, just the sweat equity they put into it is just amazing. So I just want to say hats off to them. And then I do want to just offer my condolences to the Jewish community in Pittsburgh. I think that is just horrendous, and I don't know what else to say about it.
Thanks, Mark. Joe?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Diane and congratulations. And then just one other thing, just good luck to the Colrain football team Friday night so we can wolf off on Say Next again. So other than that, that's about it.
Wrong. Why, we have to beat them twice. Because we will beat them twice.
Oh, yeah, our golfer that went to the state meeting, Alex, I can't remember her last name, she finished 31st out of 78 golfers, and I think that's the first time we've had a golfer go to the state meeting in, I think, 10 to 15 years. So congratulations to her.
Real quick on that, we, Jim and I actually had a chance to go over to Colrain when they did their Walk of Champions, and if you've ever had the opportunity to do that at either high school, both of our high schools do such a good job when any one of our students go onto state. And it's been several weeks now, but that morning, the kids all lined the halls, and all of a sudden, the band, the drum lines in front, and you can hear them coming, and they started on the top floor, and they walk, in this case it was a golfer and her family, and walk all the way on each floor. And it's just, it's just so neat to see how, because especially even golf, I'm sure you don't get a lot of the kids from school that are able to go to golf matches and cheer you on like a football player has everybody in the stands. So it was really neat, lots of pictures and hats off to them, and we've had many a times over at Northwest, they do the same thing, and just a great, great job. Also had the opportunity to attend the author, Chelsea Clinton, over at Colrain Elementary, and I want to say hats off to the staff. The kids were phenomenal. There was probably, what, 18, 20 kids that got chosen to ask questions, and to watch each one of them walk up to the microphone and ask their question, they did such a good job. And she was a great presenter. There was no politics involved, it was an author that came in, it was the third author of the year, actually Colrain's had three already. And I know, I think it's Karen Brockos, the assistant over there just does a great job connecting with these authors, and I think we should feel very privileged. She only went to one school in the entire city, and it was Colrain Elementary. So congratulations to them. Also went to the Business Awards Dinner by the Colrain Chamber of Commerce. Darryl and Jim and I were there, and congratulations to the school district. We won the Beautification Award, and a lot of that was our new schools and how they've improved the community, and there were, I don't know, four, five or so different companies in the area, and we won, so that was really cool. The other thing is John Graff, the Superintendent of Butler Tech, received the 2018 Business Leader Award, and then we also received the Business Student of the Year Award, was a Butler Tech student at Colrain High School, Ryan Medellin, and he's in the Butler Tech Business Program. So it was a pretty cool night for the district to see these awards and, you know, and just to see a different group of people, business people there, that were able to see how much our district was showcased. So I just want to congratulate all them as well. Anne, welcome.
Thank you very much.
So with that, she always tells me to slow down so she can finish typing, so I always look over. I don't always, okay. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move in second.
Moved in second. Any objections? Motion passed, five to zero. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Everybody get home safe.